Along the agenda sheet. And you will see the questions that have been given to them. Uh Larissa's library.
I apologize.
Oh, there's a ghost in the room. Um Larissa Sibel is acting as our timekeeper. Uh Larissa, do you have everything that you need?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, audience, please silence your phones so that we don't have any disturbances. Um, we have uh several questions. The first four um are ninety second questions for each of the candidates. They will come to the podium in alphabetical order. And then for the first question, it will be Nate starting us off and Carl this ending it. But the second question, it would be Javier Caballero. She will start question number two. Dr. Jose Hyman will do question number three. Start us in question number three. Sheila Huggins. Karim Khalilah Karim. And then Carl. So we'll continue that process. For each of these questions. And if anyone has any other questions, please hold them till the end. We ask the candidates keep their comments succinct. And clearly answer the questions that have been posed. Oh, and the in the meeting is being recorded.
Do we got it? We got it? Oh, okay. All right.
Did I do something wrong?
You did not Cynthia. You're amazing. Let's hear it here for Cynthia.
Please bear with me today. Okay, so with that, we'll get started. Um, the first question is a ninety second question. We'll start with Nate Baker. Um, each candidate is asked to introduce themselves and to explain briefly um how important it is to promote affordable housing and expanded transit. And when you're speaking, please use both this mic and speak with me.
Uh, good. Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you all and for everyone who's watching at home. Uh, my name is Nate Baker. I was born and raised right here in Durham. I'm a proud product of the Durham Public School System, K through twelve. Um, longtime member of the Durham Planning Commission, um where I've served since twenty eighteen, fighting against gentrification, fighting against displacement, fighting against car-centric sprawl of which we've had ten square miles just over the past um five years that is unserviceable by transit. So a lot of work to be done in in that area. So I think it's extremely important that we use our limited resources that we do have at the local level um toward those at the bottom. We need a bottom-up approach to the way that we do uh planning and development and policymaking and establish our regulations. Uh, we need to prioritize uh transit, make sure that we are keeping transit free, especially as we are losing those funds from the federal government. We need to make sure that uh we're using the the local transit dollars that we have and reorienting those for keeping transit free. Uh, we've been having some difficulties here at the city level um in in uh expanding the transit infrastructure in terms of bus stops. Um, so we need to make sure that we have good project managers on the ground who are able to uh execute those projects and deliver for our residents of Durham, particularly those at the bottom who are who must use transit in order to to be able to get around. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Next, we will have Javier Caballero.
Good afternoon and good to see you all. I'm Javier Caballero. I know many of you in this room and worked with you closely on affordable housing and transit since twenty eighteen, when I originally joined City Council, um filling in the appointment spot for former Mayor Steve Shul and then running and winning in twenty nineteen. Um, I think everyone in this room knows how dedicated I am to both affordable housing and transit. I sit on the MPO, which is our regional metropolitan planning organization. Uh, I'm one of the voting members that ensure that that twenty uh twenty fifty master transit plan moves us away from car-centric transit. Uh, I was also a council member when we put the bond in front of voters uh who overwhelmingly supported the largest affordable housing bonds North Carolina state history still to this day. And I will continue to work as I've worked for the last six years, moving that forward if reelected. I think everyone in this room understands my dedication, my work ethic. Uh, I work to get it done. Uh, and I will continue doing that. A little bit about me, um I'm a mom of three teenagers. So when folks ask me if council's hard, yes, but three teenagers are harder. And I will say I chose Durham. I was not born here. I did not have that privilege of getting to stay in a community where I was born. I'm a Chilean immigrant. Uh, we left because of the political situation. That is why I ended up in the United States. Uh, I was fortunate to end up in Durham in twenty ten because my husband got a job after being gentrified out of two other cities. Um, so again, thank you so much for having me. I look forward to this really robust conversation and.
Thank you Javier. Now we will have Dr. Monique Jose Hyman.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is such a blessing to see all of you. My name is Monique Jose Hyman. I was appointed to Durham City Council in May of twenty twenty-two. Um, really excited to hit the ground running when I became a member. Um, but I also came to Durham in two thousand and six, and so I came to Durham, really wanted to be part of the community. Uh, was on the Durham uh Mental Health Board, appointed to the Alliance Board, appointed to the Citizens Advisory Board, and I am still the Vice President, just reelected, of the Durham Social Services Board. So I love that because I'm using the county and the city to work, you know, my experience with us bringing it together. I am really, really a people person. Um, every decision I make on the council is about putting people at the forefront of my decisions and I am presently working around affordable housing. I don't like affordable. I like sustainable housing. Um, and I think we have to be creative in the city of Durham to be able to use property that the city has. To be able to use that property to be able to be creative, to have affordable and sustainable housing for people. Transportation is, I I, you know, I also sit on the mayor's uh uh committee for uh people with disabilities, and that's one of the issues that they have. You know, with all of our building, we are not really taking into consideration the people who have disabilities. Our bus stops will email me every day about they have a bus stop in a ditch that they don't have bus routes going to where they live. So I'm really, really, you know, very, very a bunch of advocate for making sure that we have the transportation for our workforce, people and our people, as Nate Baker said, at 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 our low total cost, but everybody, because we need to be able to have those transportation to be able to get to where people need to get to. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jose Hyman. Now we will have Sheila Huggins.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sheila Huggins. It's on ballot, Sheila Anne Huggins, for those of you who don't know. I have been living in Durham a little over twenty years now with my husband and my daughter. I'm originally from Greenville, North Carolina, and I worked for the city for almost nine years in three different departments. So I bring a lot of expertise, understanding of how the city works. I actually brought a special effect here with me today. This hangs in my kitchen on my wall. And it is an article from the News and Observer from May, I should have kept my glasses on, the twelfth nineteen seventy-seven, and it says declining neighborhood fights for survival with group action. There's a black man in that picture that is my father. That is when he first got started at his neighborhood. And I share that with you to let you know that is the set of values that I come from. Being in a family that has long been committed to public service and to making sure that its neighborhood is adequately represented. My father went on to serve six terms in the Greenville City Council. The other thing I want to point out about that is once he left the council, there was a change in terms of traffic there. There had been a street that went from the hospital to ECU. And once he was off, all of a sudden, it was now we're going to tear down the houses and we're going to expand the streets. So I really understand what it means when we say we have a car-centric uh society and that we need to have a complete streets program, and we need to take into account affordable housing for everyone, because they took out affordable housing where they expanded the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Next, we will have Khalilah Karim.
Hello, everybody. My name is Lily Karim. Um, I've been Durham now for about nine years, uh and in those nine years, I've spent a lot of time in community. Um, the things that always come up is housing and transportation and food and jobs. So this is not a new issue that I've been working on. Especially in the last five years that I've been working with North Carolina League of Conservation Voters, the foundation part. What we do is go into into communities to push back in ways that kinder harms show up. And usually it's because it's ways that separates their communities from other communities. So how do we start to connect that cities to cities, um communities to communities, neighborhoods to neighborhoods? We need to actually have more green spaces, more walkable spaces, more biking lanes. We need to actually be able to connect um communities to downtown so they can have better access to jobs. I say all this because this well leads when we talk about affordable housing. It's just housing in general. How do you get housing? You need wages. You need to be able to have money enough to pay it. And right now, we're facing this gap between people who are able to afford it and who can't. So we really needed to work on jobs. And then we also need to really redefine when we talk about affordable housing. Because a lot of times people don't want to think that they're homeless. But they are. There are so many homeless people right now, how certain who are moving from place to place, who don't know where they'll be next week or next month. And it's time for us to stand for our people and push back. We did that already with the ninety five, with the housing bond, and we used all of that money for affordable housing. I think we need to take more big steps and be proactive. And so we won't keep adding to the divide that we have here.
And the final introduction for this morning for this afternoon is Carl Riss.
Thank you, Cynthia. First of all, I'm going to say welcome everyone to my church here at First Presbyterian Church. So I'm so glad to be here. Minister Mini Douglas, so glad to see you here and many other members of our church. So it's so good to be here. Um, so I'm a thirty-plus-year resident of Durham, actually came here in nineteen eighty-nine after a year that my wife and I spent volunteering with Habitat for Humanity to to like set our marriage on the course of where we wanted to be in service to others. And so after that year, I decided I wanted to work on these issues at larger scale. We came to Durham where I entered graduate school at Duke in public policy, and I've worked in that public policy field ever since then. So I guess I say that by saying, well, and I should also say, we've raised two kids here, D P S graduates, but we've been involved in the church ever since I came here. Part of that involvement has been with Habitat for Humanity. So I care deeply about affordable housing, both as a policy issue, but also something I've worked on as an individual. I also care about transit. You see, I biked over here today. I've been a bike commuter for years, and so I believe in the importance of having alternative ways for people to move around our city. Um, I know I have limited time here. Let me just say, um, I've got a couple, I've got several position papers on my website that go into depth in my in the in my policy platform that includes a paper on affordable housing that has a bunch of proposals in there, including additional investment in first-time homebuyer assistance, making sure we have more diversion assistance um as well for folks who are in danger of being homeless. The pay, I also have a paper on um healthy climate, healthy Durham, that includes a number of recommendations around transit. And I know we'll talk more about that today, but I look forward to the conversation. Thank you all.
Let's give a hand for all the introductions. Okay, hopefully the folks online can still hear us. Okay, all right. Um, this reminds me of when I was in high school, the teacher would say, okay, now open your blue books. And let's get started. So with that, um, I'm going to start with Nate with the first question. Okay? The last major investment in affordable housing by the city of Durham was the twenty nineteen bond issued for ninety-five million dollars. Next year were marked five years since that action. What specific and substantial new investment in affordable housing should the city and council make next year to help meet our community's most pressing need? You have ninety seconds.
Uh, yeah, so um my day job is I'm an urban planner and I provide guidance, uh policy guidance to to cities and county governments across the state, North Carolina, and across the the up and down the East Coast. Um, and I've worked with communities to develop comprehensive plans and strategies uh that then lead to oftentimes uh major investments of issuing bonds and those kinds of things. And um, so uh one example is working in El Paso, Texas, um developing a strategy um for a sort of comprehensive bond. It was quality of life bond, what they called it. And those those monies went into a variety of different uh areas. So when parks and recreation went into affordable housing, uh went into transit infrastructure and went into multimodal uh tra- transportation, and then they adopted a with a project that we worked on, which is complete streets uh policy. Uh, they they brought community members to the table whenever there were uh trans- transportation infrastructure updates to to make. Um, so this is really sort of a bottom-up approach, and it's a forward-thinking approach. How are we going to spend our money and then issuing the bond to uh to do just that? Um, the Affordable Housing Bond, we we definitely need to make sure that we spend the rest of that money uh and that we do it in in the best way possible, that we have good project managers that are on the ground, that are executing the projects that we already know that we need to do um and spending the rest of of those funds well. Thank you.
Thank you. That's an excellent question that I've spent a long time thinking about already. Um, every, as we all know in this room, every single dollar of the twenty-nine twenty nineteen bond, but really that affordable housing strategy, which is a hundred and sixty million dollars total, is allocated. So the only thing we can do is think about what's next. And so what's next? Some of the ideas I do have, but I know that I have to be, as council, are going to have to have deep conversation, just like we did with the twenty nineteen Affordable Housing Bond and Affordable Housing Strategy. Uh, we're going to have to go to the folks who are leading on that work and come up with what is next. Some ideas that I have. Uh, one thing I know we need is actual rent assistance fund, a joint city-county rent assistance fund. I think we need to encourage the county to move their dollars out of Department of Social Services. City needs to contribute, and we need to house it in a nonprofit so we can get the dollars out quickly. It's something that we learned uh with rent, with the dollars that we got from the federal government during the pandemic. I also know that we're going to have to continue um adding and doing more of the form of supportive housing. Uh, we did not, we we know that that need has increased. Our last pit count, our point-in-time count that we did in January showed we have more unhoused neighbors, and I think everyone in this room knows that we need to do more for them. So we're going to have to put another affordable housing on forward. There's no way around that. Um, and I think that we're going to have to work just as diligently as we did before to ensure that there's, you know, an eight to seven percent approval rating like we did last time, but things that I think that we're going to have to do beyond uh what we think about when we think about affordable housing is um workforce housing strategy. Right now, the city does its own thing, the county does its own thing, and our schools are starting to do their own thing. And we need to think about how we're going to move all together, and I think the city is the only place that actually has a department to move us for. So my hope and plans that we would put everything through our community development uh department and work cohesively together and collaboratively. Thank you.
Hello. One of the things that I kind of pride myself on is that I'm a social worker and we look at things from a person and environment approach. And so one of the things that I would like to see is, first of all, I learned a lot being appointed, and so we have to make sure that we have all these things and talk about it in pre-budget. Right? And so if I'm so blessed to be back on the council, we're going to start those conversations about innovative strategies around of affordable housing and things that we can do. But I also am the um Regional Director for the North Carolina Legal Cities, N B C Legal, and I love to go to different conferences to find out what other cities are doing. One of the things I found another city is doing, and they have a one-stop shop. They have a place with homeless, for homeless, for health and human services. So that's why I love about the fact that I still keep a foot into being involved with the county, because we have to work together. We have to come up with creative strategies. Their particular strategy that I found when I went to this particular training, literally decreased homelessness and increased affordable housing. So we've got to be very creative and think outside the box, and that's what I do. I'm I'm a social worker. I trained over thirty years, done a lot of grassroots, um, you know, uh started my career in the crack epidemic in New York City with under the first black mayor, David Dickens, and that is what I do. I am about solution-focused and creative thinking outside the box, things to be able to tackle the things that we're doing and doing this thing. Thank you.
So we're going to focus on two city departments, and one is the General Services Department, where we house our real estate division, and the other is the Office of Economic and Workforce Development. I worked in both of those departments. In our real estate division, we actually have uh, we manage the city track database, which is basically an inventory of city-owned property. So a lot of times we talk about um how to take a leadership role in terms of putting affordable housing out there. Well, one of the best things that the city can do is to take a look at its own inventory of property that it owns, go through its departments like it normally does and say, hey, do you need this? Are we going to need this in the future? And say, what is appropriate property that the city has that it can either enter into a public-private partnership or possibly sell to another party in order to be able to get more affordable housing out there? The second thing I want to talk about is the Office of Economic and Workforce Development, because as we talk about affordable housing, what I like to remind people is there's no home that's affordable if you do not have a job or an income to pay for it. And I don't know if you've been following along, but Dollar General, Kroger, and Walmart are now piloting self-service-only stores. So a lot of the jobs that we're thinking are going to be here, some of those jobs will not go to be here. So we need to start having open and transparent conversations with our residents about the job training skills, the experience, the education that they need so that they can get some of the new jobs that are going to be here. And there's more on my website, a plan called the Sixteenth, and you can check that out there. Thank you. I think for us to tackle affordable housing, we're going to need to do a lot of things, and we're going to need to invest in people first. Uh, it's more than just uh wages. It's going to be resources and funding. We need to tackle our youth to make sure they have pathways to jobs, they have pathways to to be able to do anything outside of just you know, going into crime, but I'm not saying all you go into crime, but also we need to make sure that there's things for them to do, like recreation, uh recreational centers, uh basketball, any kind of program that will keep them active and into their community. But we also need to think about how the housing bond actually did help, and so we can, should do another one, so we can actually use that money for affordable homes. But also we can start to use that money to look at our city workers and their pay and try to use some of that money to help with that gap. As we've been seeing, that's been a problem this year with a lot of our city workers. So it needs to be a lot of things we think about when we think about affordable housing, but it starts with the people. And so how do we help the people? So then that's just to be a fact, so we can do both at the same time.
No worries about the long, it sounds like waking up in the morning, so it's a good reminder. So so let me say, first of all, like affordable housing is probably the biggest issue in this race, right? It's this, it's the big issue in Durham, so we have to address that, and we need more tools rather than less tools, fewer tools. Um, I'm so proud of the ninety-five million dollar bond issue, the biggest of any community in North Carolina, right? It's a really critical piece. We need to continue to execute on those, on the promises of forever home. Thanks for being here, Dan Hudgens. Execute on the forever home um and make that work for all the families we intend to serve. A couple of ideas. One is that in that Affordable Housing Bond, we have, I think, five million dollars for first-time homebuyer assistance in the form of a zero-interest um second mortgage, right? That the max of that second, of that uh second mortgage has been increased to eighty thousand dollars, meaning we're going to serve less than the four hundred people we had planned to serve when we first delivered that bond, right? So I think one thing we can do is to provide more assistance for first-time low-income homeowners to allow folks to buy a home, have that security of a home, but also the generational wealth in a home. And that will take more investment to reach those four hundred families we have intended to serve, right? Secondly, there's somebody thirty seconds. Yeah. Secondly, the city of Charlotte actually has a first-time homebuyer assistance program for first responders and teachers, right? So firefighters, police officers, teachers. I think we ought to consider that in Durham, given all the conversation about city workers and how to make sure they can, they can thrive and be residents of Durham. The last thing I'll say, then one second, what Javier said, we need to begin thinking about also additional subsidy in the future, maybe additional bond to provide affordable rental and permits for the house.
Question number two, and this we will start with Javier with the response. Do you have, you as candidates, have any reason not to support the vision statement that the Coalition and other community groups have endorsed for the redevelopment of the five oh five site? Our proposal outlines the components we urge the city to include in the RFP for the development of the five oh five West Chapel Hill Street property. For all of the audience, the candidates have been supplied with the summary of the Coalition's position on five oh five.
Thank you for that question. Y'all should have just made that a yes, no. Um. Uh, I think it's a great proposal. I've met with folks, Durham can ask this question of all candidates. Uh, council will be taking it up at our work session. My guess will be that it'll be the next council that actually decides. There is going to have to be some kind of education for those folks um who will actually be making the decision. If reelected, I will do my uh work as a senior council member at that point um to ensure that we have consensus. The only thing I would add is along with that kind of nonprofit um service provider um focus is also for for folks who are artists or culture workers, because we don't have that's one thing that we are hearing very loud and clear from artist communities. They're also losing affordable housing or stable housing, because rent is so high and it's so hard to buy a home right now. So that that would be the only addition I would add. Thank you. Yes, I do. Thank you for that.
So yes, he also had to answer this last night on a cam even weekend. I'm going to say yes, 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 yes. Um, I am just so excited about the innovative strategy around this recent, and and so again, being that I've been appointed, as my council member said, we have been already discussing about some of the things that we want to see uh in the at this site. And I think it's a creative way to not only get all affordable housing for the vulnerable populations, but to also, I'm very excited about the nonprofit piece, because I want to see some mental health. I want to see some, you know, programs around youth, which is really the the target of why we have a lot of the gun violence. And also I'd like to see some preservation on the historical piece. I know that some people don't think that's important, but history in Durham is important to me. Um, so I'm very excited about this. I would definitely support it, and you know, but we gotta do more stuff like this, I mean, and 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 also groceries. So I mean, this is an ideal uh kind of proposal to really leave a forefront for what we need to do in Durham. So I'm very excited about this. Yes.
And like the others said, we all did pretty much say yes last night. There is one other thing I do want to talk about, though. I think we had some missed opportunities in terms of when it comes to our city-owned property. And we're looking at five oh five now, and we're saying, here are all of the things that we would like to have. But we have actually had some missed opportunities here in Durham. A lot of you probably like the new make of deck when you go downtown and you see the artwork, when you see the commercial spaces. But that was actually a lot that we could have had our voice in to say what we thought the direction needed to be. There's also one oh two Morris Street. I actually was responsible for the RFP. That's down on five points. People are trying to envision where that is now. It's the one on the corner that used to have the cupcake shop and the bicycle and all of that. So when we put the RFP out, again, this was administration-led, and so the concern was, hey, we really want to get this back out into the private space so that we can have this at the cabins for redevelopment in that area. Now, take in mind, both of these were, again, administration-led. Imagine what we couldn't have done if they had been community-led and neighborhood-led. And so one of the things we need to think about doing is have a a comprehensive plan that says every time we get ready to look at selling or getting rid of city-owned property or doing something, redeveloping it, we take into account this plan. In the past, we had Greenfire looking at the Chapel Hill Street Lot, the deck. We can go back and revisit what our city property can look like. Thanks.
Um, yes. I really love this idea, because it's a way for us to actually use city property in our, in our um, in our own fortune. Uh, I love the ideas that, but the grocery store, but also put space for nonprofits. Um, I work in a building right now in Raleigh, and on like the fifth floor, there's Stormwater. Uh, there is arts and uh the Arts Council is on the fourth floor. And so anytime I have a real question, I can go around to my office and actually ask them, set meetings, do joint functions together. And so like this vision that people set up for this that we're listening to right now, maybe that could happen more. We have a set space that these community groups can actually meet and talk. So I'm all for it, and I think it's a great idea.
Again, yes, on this, I'm I'm glad I've been a member of the Coalition and have been met with March of the Web, this has been developed, so I love your idea of this. And again, as folks have said, when we have city-owned property, we need to maximize our leverage there. So yes, to the housing, yes, the retail, including grocery, yes, to the open space and historic recognition, and yes, to the office space, where I think you call them like changemakers, right? So it's all good. A couple of points to amplify. I know that you all set the the brain twenty-five to thirty percent, recognizing that if we can get more total units, right? Then maybe it's twenty-five percent affordable, but that means it's more affordable. So the the big number is like, what's the total number of units that are affordable? Including some that are also affordable at thirty percent AMI below as well, right? Those are all important. Um, I would also say that we need to use our leverage as a city to make sure that the contractors building this also pay living wage jobs, too. So let's use that maximum leverage um in all those ways. So great proposal. Thanks for your work on that. Um, and let's get it done.
Uh, yes, we need a, yes, uh, we need a comprehensive uh housing strategy. This needs to be part of that strategy. Of course, it's a, it's a critical site. Um, the city owns a fraction of a fraction of a fraction of the land in this city. Uh, we are not the the owners of the means of producing our own city, but there are rare opportunities that we do have. So we need to make sure that when we do own these ki- kinds of properties, that we're not selling or holding on them, and that we're maximizing what we can actually do on those sites. Uh, twenty-five percent, sixty percent area median income and and below, uh, we we can, should, must do better than that. Uh, we do need to make sure that we are doing thirty percent and deeply affordable housing on city-owned property. Sixty percent A M I we can get from private developers, and we should be getting that on a regular basis and need to be uh targeting that. Um, so uh, this is all all part of a a larger, a Um so uh this is all all part of a a larger affordable housing strategy that we need to be looking at. Um mixes of uses on on these kinds of sites, I also think are absolutely critical. Um and this is really our opportunity to say, hey, what kind of grocery store are we gonna have? Is it grocery store as a cooperative? Um is it a worker-owned grocery store? Uh what are our values and how do we make sure that we're bringing those kinds of folks um to these kinds of sites that that the city does own?
Thank you to the candidates for those very, very detailed um responses, we appreciate that. Um the next question, the proposed comprehensive plan update establishes the policy that affordable housing should be included in new development proposals and that the city and county should encourage and incentivize housing that meets the needs of Durham residents. Recently, one of the biggest residential rezoning projects in South Point offered zero affordable apartments and the rezoning request was approved. The redup redevelopment plans for North Gate Mall currently do not offer any housing, let alone affordable housing. Would you make affordable housing a condition for approval when residential and mixed-use projects need rezoning? We'll begin with Dr. Jose Heim.
So uh yes, I will, and I'm just gonna preference by saying um my voting records since I've been on the council have really not been about all this productive, well, not productive, um the development, um and I do will say very, very transparently that I did vote for the approval of the South Point um proposal, and I'm gonna tell you why. I knew that there were no, was not affordable housing there, but the the South Point Mall is one of our biggest tax revenues in Durham. And I'm also professor at Central, and a lot of my students have jobs there, a lot of the elderly in the community have jobs there. And so when I met with the builders, I said to them that I'm not happy about the non-affordable housing, but I need you to make sure there are jobs in this community for this populations, and also I need you to make sure that there's something for the youth, because if you, all of our youth, they go to the mall, that's just what it is, you know? And so I told them about my frustration, and I will say to you, one of the first things that I learned when I got on council was I couldn't really say I need this amount of affordable housing, because we're a Dillon State and you can't do that. And I think most of you know that I'm passionate about affordable housing, and most of you know that I also was also accused of an allegation with a builder, right? And clearly was very much a couple of months, weeks ago, um FBI, FBI cleared me. I never did it, but because I did not, I did not vote the way people wanted me to vote, I've had eight months of tragedy. I'm still standing, I'm gonna stand up for what's right, and if I had to do it all over again, no, I wouldn't wanna have to go through what I went through, but I would still stand up for what is right, which is making sure that the people in Durham get what they need. And that doesn't mean that I'm gonna vote like people want me to vote, and that's why I went through that for the last eight months, thank you.
I think Dr. Holesy Heim just touched on um some things that I really wanna go a little bit deeper on. So as an attorney, um a lot of times we are going to have the rule of law that we are going to follow, and there are always many cases going to be exceptions and exclusions to those, and I don't think that that's, sorry, any different here. And she just went over one of the prime reasons why she took some time away to say, hey, I'm not in supportive of this because you don't have affordable housing here, but here's why I am going to vote in support of that. And I think our council members need to have some flexibility to be able to, especially, especially, hear from people who live in that area who will be most impacted by that development, to make sure that we're looking at environmental impacts, to make sure that we're considering traffic impacts and that we're actually listening to the people who are going to have to suffer through that. So I think there is always going to be this give and take, and we're going to be trying to work together to figure out how can we get the most affordable housing out of every redevelopment that's put it out there every single time and still make sure that we're taking into account these other issues too, thanks.
Yes, as we talked about before, affordable housing is one of the biggest things that's happening right now in Durham that we really need to pay attention to and we need to be proactive on. So all development needs to have some kind of affordable housing in it. Uh right now, what we can do, uh that's legal, seeing there's prevent pre-adjuctions on what we can say and what we can do, but there can be proppers from developers that that give us something, that bring back equity, that could be proppers for saying that there would be so much though funds that we put in to be building uh between this um AMI or less. So there are ways for us to continuously push uh that affordable housing, because this is what we're, we need to build right now in Durham. Uh the health, uh not health, I'm sorry, the wealth, the the wealth gap right now between black and white people in Duros is drastic. And right now, we need to find ways to 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 shorten that 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 gap. And to do that, we find that people who own homes have a way of um passing down generational wealth that actually helps with this. So we need to be really, really imaginative in how we do this and pushing ways that we can, but it should be the first thing on our mind when we're thinking about development.
Um thanks, Cynthia, great question. Yeah, so again, affordable housing is our biggest issue in Durham, so yes, in principle, when there's a rezoning decision going on, we want to see affordable housing included in that. But I think it's worth saying, as others on the panel have mentioned, that every zoning case is a little bit different, right? And so developers also can build things by right. And so we have to be careful that if we don't wanna, if if that's a condition for if affordable housing is a condition and developers don't wanna go for it, they also can do whatever they wanna do, or with their plan, so so what they wanna do with the land may be inferior to what we want, and so we have to be a little bit creative now. I'd love to see affordable housing every rezoning, but let's use our creativity as council members and our staff to make sure we get the maximum benefits for the community all rezoned.
Yes, zoning is absolutely critical, uh for our council members to understand. Um so what I will say is absolutely yes, we do need to make it a condition and an expectation. Yes, we have the legal authority to do that, we need to have a council that understands that. There are there are three different ways that we can do it. Uh we can set an expectation so that when they come before the council for a rezoning, they only get that rezoning uh if they provide affordable housing, we need to be clear that when we sit on the dais and the courts have been very clear in North Carolina that when you sit on the dais, you can't say you're only getting, you get the rezoning if you provide us affordable housing. When you chat with the developer, but behind the doors, that's when you tell the developer, hey, you gotta provide affordable housing, you want your rezoning. You can also use conditional zoning, and we can also uh set expectations around uh density bonuses, but we can't give density away for free. If we do that, then there's no reason, there's no incentive for them to to provide affordable housing. So South Point Mall, they got their rezoning. I I like that that's an example, because that's an example that is happening over and over and over again in our city. North Gate Mall, great example of how we need to be proactive. The state allows us as a city to go and be proactive and rezone parcels, we need to use that authority. We have not been using that authority, so we need to apply conditional zoning or some other zoning um that is in line with the the community vision on on North Gate Mall. We need to be more aggressive with how with how we can use that, we know that we have that authority. We need, it's in chapter one sixty D, and we need to be creative in in giving that.
Thank you, thank you for that excellent question. Um I voted no on the South Point rezoning, and I voted no, um because there were lots of reasons I voted no, actually, um. And I think it's a really good example of where you do have leverage. Part of my thinking around that was actually thinking about the North Gate site. I knew that if I didn't hold those folks accountable, like if we can't get rezoning on those really big parcels, you know, somebody who's putting in a few hundred units, a hundred units, they don't have the capital to pencil out a large percentage of affordable units. They just don't, unless you're gonna get a government subsidy. But when you get into a project that has a lot of units on it, you need to push really, really hard. We can incentivize, and I really liked that in the question, and encourage, and that's what we need to do, and that's what I've been doing since twenty eighteen. We have a lot of voluntary proppers, meaning developers are actually putting units forward. It's because council, very much behind the scenes, have been saying, so, I would really appreciate if, right? You have to use your language, and I really appreciated the deep dive that we had um on housing over several months. Uh there's some really amazing um uh video and questions, and Donna Tool from our city attorney's office had a really, really great presentation exactly around that question of incentivizing. And I think with our UDO rewrite, our Unified Development Ordinance rewrite, we're gonna have a a really excellent opportunity. One of the things I would like to do is how do we create kind of a report card, a point system around certain things, like you give us more green states, you give us some more affordable housing. What I've heard from the development community is they want a more predictable and quicker process, and so can we put them on their own pipeline if they give us certain community benefits, and that's something I would wanna do if reelected, thank you.
Too bad we can't have all of these great ideas on the council always at the same time. Durham would be an awesome place then. Okay, our last ninety-second question is as follows. Um this coalition is concerned not only with affordable housing, but also with transit, so this is a transit question. Do you support regional rail service, not commuter rail, focusing on weekday nine and five service in the future of Durham transit? And what steps should the city take to make it happen? We'll start with Sheila.
Thank you. So there are a few things um that we can start to do to move in that direction, but first of all, understanding that this is something that we'd be looking at for the future, because we're not quite in the situation there where we need this right now. We're we're not set up with the density and where the locations are. So one of the things we can start to do is to really take advantage of underlying where our corridors are going to be and make sure that we are um securing property rights. Because one of the things that happens is, and I've heard this from residents, as we continue to build, that property is not going to be available if there's already a building on it. One of the other things that um we need to think about when we're talking about this rail is not just to look at it in terms of it by itself, it has to be a part of our transportation globally too, exactly. And so we've been talking a lot about bus rapid transit, knowing that we lost quite a bit of money with our last rail project that we were considering. So it's not just rail, it's also making sure that we have safe streets for anybody who's using them, and that's also people who are walking, people who are running, people who are using mobility devices, and people who are biking. And I think right now, we're hearing a lot from people in the community that that is not the case, we're hearing a lot from the Mango, Rockspore Street area, the Cleveland Holloway area. I know that I run and walk along my own streets, and we had a lot of issues on Club Boulevard in terms of just the sidewalks. So another piece to that, a final piece I wanna talk about, is making sure we have staff on hand, because right now we got a lot of vacancies, and making sure we have staff on hand to be able to carry out these projects, because right now we really don't, thanks.
I really like the idea of a rail system that kind of connects uh people, and it will give people an opportunity to get other jobs. But to actually do that kind of rail system, as you were at point out, would be very expensive. So we have to start thinking about who can partner with it to fund this uh with the state or the county. But then also, we really need to reach out to the community and see if this is what they want. Because right now, we have the city relies on bus, and a lot of our minorities and low-income, uh become individuals, that's what they prefer right now. So let's making sure we're spending our city money in a way that actually helps our city residents. And so I think bus rapid transit would be a great way to start, um just making sure that people have a way to move around in the city. Uh but and as we start to get more money, we can start to look into the IRA has released some kind of funds around uh sustainable uh transportation. We can start applying for grants and try to see what we can do with that right now, but we really do need to reach out to the community to see which is the best way the community can help through transportation.
Thank you again, Cynthia, I'm gonna hold my notes here, but don't forget them. So, you know, the work of it for almost thirty years in DC was all about economic opportunity, and one way to increase economic opportunity in a regional area like the Triangle is to make sure people have mobility options to get to where the jobs are. That includes jobs in Durham, but also jobs in the park and jobs in Raleigh, right? So I'm a big fan of reasonable ability and make sure people get access to the jobs. Um if you look at the options we have on the table, bus rapid transit is great in town, right? But bus rapid transit is not gonna get people from here in Durham to Raleigh, right? Commuter rail is also great, but it's not gonna deliver on the ser- service quality we want, and it's also not gonna be funded by the Fed, so it's not a real option. Regional rail is our best option to get people here to uh to to the park and other communities in Raleigh. Um the way we can use that, the question that the look in the city, so first of all, we have a vision for what that looks like, what regional rail looks like in that area. We need to leverage our 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 participation on the NPO boards to make sure we are moving towards that and making decisions moving towards regional rail. The last thing is, we're already making investments, I think Sheila mentioned this, and others, we're making investments now on that rail corridor, right? So we need to make sure that we're making those investments, we're making it with with a vision of regional rail serving in this corridor, so thanks for the question.
Uh yes, I I think it's important to have a long-term vision for what regional rail in in the Triangle can look like. I think that we need to explore every single opportunity that that lies before us for how people can get across the region. We're growing, we know it's getting harder and harder to to travel, we know we can't keep adding another lane and then another lane and another lane to all our corridors. Um and I also think this is an important opportunity to emphasize the importance of bus rapid transit. Um bus rapid transit works extremely well. Uh I've lived in Belo Horoscopy, Brazil, where I traveled um by BRT thirty, forty minutes, uh very long distances. Uh it works extremely well when it is done right, and it's done right when it has its own dedicated lane with a barrier between itself and traffic. Uh it works well when uh the platforms are built uh properly and the sliding doors on the right side of the bus allow you to get on and off, and you pay on the platform keep things moving, and it works really well when the lights are timed so that when the bus is approaching the light, the light changes green so that you don't have to slow down, otherwise you're just another bus stuck in traffic. So we need to make that investment in bus rapid transit, the federal dollars are coming in for BRT right now. We can't lose this opportunity, Raleigh just got a whole bunch of federal dollars, Chapel Hill is working on their BRT. Durham needs to take, be proactive on that, and I also think we can get around the Toronto using BRT. And we also need to uh be open to regional rail um in the future.
Thank you, uh that's a great question, so being an NPO member for several years, I find it quite in-depth, um so yes, we need a a regional rail system, we need BRT, and we need an excellent, excellent local fixed route uh route. We also need good sidewalks and bike routes, we need all of it, that's what multimodal means, it means everything, um you know, the entry fee, everything above, right? Um so one of the exciting things is around the Biden administration and what they're willing to fund right now, and that is what we're doing as a region. Uh for a long time, I will just name that Raleigh and Wade were really, really committed to a commuter rail, and Durham had kind of moved beyond that and realizing that it does not come into work, and so I'm really, really happy that our counterpart in Wake County, who could have funded a section of commuter rail all on their own without any federal dollars, has moved away from that, and now we're all kind of cooperating together, including Orange County on this vision of rail. So yes, I think we need it, uh there are going to be corridors like Highway seventy that are gonna be way better suited for BRT um than rail. And again, we will need a state partner in this eventually, so part of it is yes, local, but we've got to afford the state, y'all, because there's there's a whole funding mechanism that we are, we don't get because of the state, uh and they're just complete obstinance to mass transit, so I just wanna name that in this room, thanks.
So um about two weeks ago, I was selected by the mayor to go with about thirty people, some of us in county and city to Indianapolis, the Raleigh Chambers intercity visit. And it was, I loved going to different places, I just see so many creative things, and it was amazing, however, they would have raised taxes, and that's what they, how they did a lot of things they were doing. Um but they had the bus rapid transit, they had the regional uh rail, and they also had like bike lanes. They have a housing was not affordable, but it was beautiful. Um and so went to see this, I mean, I would love to see a lot of that here again, they had to raise taxes to be able to do those creative things that they did. But I think that we definitely have to make sure that I think when I first got on council, I was so upset about the money that was lost about the project, right? I think it was, I don't even know, millions of dollars, right Javier? And I was like, that money was like just lost, and there's so many other things that we can do with this money that you're just gonna allow to 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 lose like that. So before we do anything, we just definitely have to have a need assessment in the community with the key players at the table to see what is the best way to go in terms of transportation, because we cannot lose that amount of money. I I just thought about so many things I could have did with that, millions of dollars, especially with my people, local people here in Durham. So we definitely have to have a need assessment, definitely thinking all the players together before we jump into other things, thank you.
Okay, that concludes our ninety-second round. So these next series of questions, we're gonna give the candidates a fitness break. They're gonna pass the microphones so they can sit and answer the questions, because they're basically yes or no questions with a brief explanation at the end, thirty seconds only. So yes, I must know where you stand on it. No, no. Okay. The first question in this round is, do you support or oppose the SCAD text amendment as presented to the city council for discussion on August 21st? Does the current council allow the incoming council to decide whether to approve the SCAD text amendments? Yes or no? Yes, I'll stay here to help pass between the table.
The first one is, will I support or oppose, right? So I, I don't know what the SCAD amendment is right now. But for many of you who went to the Durham camp event, there are some things in there that I do like with being able to do homes with churches, being able to build homes in church lands, especially this whole forum that we've talked about affordable housing, let's be creative in the ways that we actually go about doing that.
No, you don't support SCAD as it was presented on.
That's a tricky one. I feel like. I hope that the council has the ability, that now to decide and the new council coming in should have the ability to decide too.
Oh, she answered it fine. Remember, you know, what you think today might be different what you get in that seat. But for right now, this is what you're committing to us to, okay? So just answer based on what you're thinking now.
Right, so I do not support the entire SCAD as presented, right? As I've said before, there's many things in SCAD you ought to consider that are very positive, but as an entire thing, no. I will say, I think I have to be careful. I think the council needs to do the business before the council. And I think there's a slip or slope when we say, okay, there's an election coming up, let's pause it or whatever. So how far do we like, it is six months before election, you don't take the act and someone's the council now to do that work, so I trust.
No, I do not support SCAD as it is written. As I've stated a few times, there are some pieces in there that are described, there are some pieces in there that look good, but they need to be rewritten. And then there are some poison pills that just need to go away. And also, this is just a bad way of policy making. We shouldn't let industries that to regulate, allow, we shouldn't allow industries to be able to write their own regulations. And then I do support the idea of the next council taking up the SCAD amendments. And if I'm on that council, I will fold them into a broader array of more people-centric amendments to be by development ordinance.
Thank you for the question. I do not support SCAD as it is currently written. I have on the record said that affordability piece was something I had a lot of questions around, especially just the length of affordability. There are, as many folks have already said, a number of really, really crucial things that we need to do. I think that the current council needs to vote on it because it's been punted several times. And I think one of the strengths of SCAD is that whatever we don't like, there is a U D O rewrite happening. And so there's an opportunity for the next council to strip whatever power is given that's already built into the process.
No, I do not support SCAD as it is presented. There was a lot of issues around even how it was introduced to us. And so I don't, I also feel that the community was left out of this whole piece. And so I would, again, there are some things, as everybody said, that are, you know, some things that I do like about it. Just the way it was written, it was written to the point that the community could not really understand all of it and I couldn't. And so I just think it was totally just the way it was introduced and needs to be really be looked at and changed now. I would love to vote on this because I've started this, but I would also like the new council coming in because maybe they're going to bring a different, you know, a different eye, a different look to be able to just really put some thing for the people.
I remember those questions here. Okay, so do I oppose SCAD as it was presented on August 24th? And as I oppose to SCAD as it was presented. And we have talked about a number of reasons why there are a few things in there that we do need to take another look at in regards to the incoming council or the current council making the decision. Look, I never think we should be advocating responsibility to someone else for a job that you were hired to do. And so basically, our city council members were hired to do the job. If we have issues with anything that council is voting on, it is up to us to show up and let them know we think they need to do otherwise.
Next question. The city and county have reduced or eliminated property taxes for lower income homeowners. The county with city approval is eliminating property taxes for senior homeowners who are extremely low income, below 30% area median income. Should the city and county eliminate property taxes for all homeowners who are extremely low income, below 30% area median income? We'll start with Carl Ritz.
Thank you, Cynthia. You know, one of the things I'm most proud of is having worked with them and Jim Swarwar and others at the committee, the People's Alliance and the Coalition to create this model, property tax assistance for long-term low-income homeowners. Awesome. I think we've done. So I'm glad they were eliminating taxes for elderly homeowners at 30% AMI or below. 30% AMI is like 21,000 for a single family, 24,000 for two people, so it's very low income. I'd like to see the numbers about the number of homeowners at all ages at 30% AMI, but I like the direction this is going. I think it's something we should do.
I do support this. I think this is a good idea. I don't think that we have very many homeowners that are in this category. I don't think this is a very expensive thing to do and I think that it's a very good use of taxpayer dollars.
Agreed. I think this is something that I've been really, really proud of as a council member, so that we can move this forward. I think that we will have a good analysis about commenting council. One thing that I want to really just clear with both of my assets, we have to add capacity into the county office on the tax office. But if we expand the program, it's not automatic, right? People applying to a grant program. And so then we actually have to get the word out and that means the people and extra capacity in that department. So if we're not putting that along with the ask for more money to add administrative capacity, it's going to fail. So I think that that has to be an adjacent ask.
I'm going to say yes. I really have a goal to try to have more people who are renting move into home ownership. That's really a goal of mine, but I just really feel like we have people leaving Durham. And they're leaving Durham because they're not, they cannot afford to stay here. And so whatever we can do to have people stay here, I like Durham. This is why I came from New York. I want all people to stay here. So I, yes, yes, yes.
I support the program. I think the only thing that I would be concerned about is the practical aspects of being able to keep this sustainable.
Yes, I support. I think when we think about that low area median income, we're thinking about our Everly who are sitting in place, who are resting in place there, and we need to make sure that we're taking care of them. And so I think this will not be a big burden on the city and be a great start to kind of helping everybody in our city be able to stay here.
Next question. In view of the increasing cost burden of rental housing, how would you support expanding the city's guaranteed annual income program in partnership with the county to offset housing costs for extremely low income households who are severely cost burdened, that is paying more than half of their income on housing? Nate will start this round.
Yes, I would support increasing, expanding the guaranteed income program, particularly for those who are reentering, who've been incorporated. I don't think we realistically expand to have a meaningful impact on those who are rental cost burdened. I do think that we need to strong tenet union in Durham and the Triangle. That's something that we need to work on collectively to build and build and empower. And part of that is going to be reconvening a committee to look at the Tenants Bill of Rights and provide more power within the city government to expand and empower the Tenants Bill of Rights.
Thank you for the question. Yes, and I actually want to lift up Mayor Cory Ten Middleton's work on this along with former House Member Pierce Freelon. Thank you. They did a lot of work around this and I'm proud of what the city has already put towards this. And I think something, again, everything that we do needs to be with the county. It just doesn't make sense. That was actually one of the problems with the property tax relief programs. For a long time, it was just very discreet pieces across the city and it didn't have the impact that we want. And so this is another example. If we really want impact, it's got to be everyone. We've got to work well together.
I'm going to say yes, which is why, another reason why when I was appointed, I tried to continue to keep my position in the county on the DSS one to be able to work together and put those collaborations together. But you know, I don't know, you know, I'm sorry, when you're riding down Fayetteville Street, when I'm leaving South Point, going to Fayetteville, coming to City Hall, there is an increase of homeless right on that street. And it's not only it's a homeless, but it's also prostitution. It's also drug-infested. And so you've got to do whatever you can, we can do to try to, number one, combat the homeless and get people in affordable, sustainable. So, yes.
So I support the guaranteed annual income program. Here's the challenge with this piece. And so I think we need to think about this from a practical aspect. It was great that this was a no strings program, that they could take the money. They didn't have to say what they were using it for. The only hiccup is now we don't know what the gap is. We don't know where services could be provided or other resources. And so I think we need to find a way to be able to determine that piece also in addition to making sure. Because the reality is, this is really about money. So if we can lift up people so that they make a higher income, then that can be part of what we do all of those things.
Yes, I do support this. I also really like that in this program that Mark Anthony Ellison and Pierce Freelon started, that they're using people who have records to be a part of this program. Because as we know, that it already makes it appear like harder once you've been inside of jail. It makes it more likely for you to go back. It makes it more likely for you to be homeless. It makes it more likely for you to do a lot of things. And so this is a way that we can actually help with that recidivism. And I think this is a great way. We just need to get more grant funding, but I think this would be a great start.
So, so yes, that's how I'm going to warn you. I've got a position paper on that. So I've got a policy paper on community safety and it includes a proposal there for thinking about expanding basic income for everyone. Another currently, the Excel program is, I think, 100, 120 folks returning from prison. I've suggested we need to think about everybody that returns from prison to Durham should have basic income for a year. So we make that a basic income. This idea is great to sort of think about another, other ways to target basic income. I would say that as long as this is not sort of strength attached, right? The idea of basic income is no strength attached. So if this is essentially required for rental payments, then let's expand rental assistance.
All right, and because we're running short on time, this is going to be a raise your hand to these next, these next few questions. The first question, do you support the expansion of the city's expenditure of funds this year for sidewalk repair and expansion to improve access to bus stops? And would you support such expansion in the future? Hands up if yes, hands down if no. Everybody that was, did I get my hands up? The audience was even helping me with that. And I believe this is our last question for the day. Do you support the continued installation of bike lanes on city streets? Hands up for yes, keeping hands down for no. Okay, and with that, we conclude the candidates forum. Let's give a hand.